Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura Ingham and this is your flash briefing for the week of July 22nd. City Council Meet for Regular Session Tuesday night, 6:00 in Council Chambers and City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Join the team at Lee Summit Water Utilities. We have a range of exciting career opportunities for those who thrive in a collaborative environment and are driven to create innovative solutions. Be part of an elite team. Lee Summit Water Utilities is one of only 17 accredited water utilities nationwide. This is your chance to work with the best and make an impact. Apply today and help shape the future of water services. Learn more at lspeople.net. Be sure to sign up for the city's free alert system, LS Aware. Receive emergency and non-emergency information by text, email, or phone for events such as severe weather and road closures. You choose how you want to be notified. Learn how to sign up at cityofls.net. And Fourth Friday's Art Walk is this Friday, July 26th in downtown from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Art Walk will feature over a dozen artist pop-ups and showcases inside and outside of downtown businesses. Enjoy music in the park at 6:30 p.m. at Howard Station Park. For more information, go to downtownls.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a Street Name Sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of a Street Name Sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys and get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Hello, I'm Colin McCage and I'm here to show you how to test and adjust the water pressure in your home. Testing water pressure in a home can protect its plumbing. First, check the fixtures to see if they are leaking or if there is debris in the aerator or faucet. If no issues are found around the plumbing or fixtures, test the home's water pressure. Ensure there is no water use inside your home. Locate your front water spigot. Place a water pressure gauge on the spigot. An ideal water pressure for your home is 40 to 80 PSI. Contact Water Utilities about the water pressure issue before adjusting. To adjust your water pressure, locate your home's pressure reducing valve, or PRV. Loosen the lock nut on the PRV with a wrench. Loosen or tighten depending if you want more or less water pressure. Tighten the lock nut once you have your desired water pressure. Thank you for watching. For more information and questions, go to lswater.net.
It's extremely rewarding overall. Just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work. In many cases, leaving the city for employment. And went through a leadership class through the chamber. Learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have. And was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on city council. And so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my involvement on city council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective, great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it. And to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with metropolitan community colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters and they're all fairly active, some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails. I love riding my bike and I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible talented residents that come from all different walks of life. You know, very diverse group of families in our community. That it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that you get, in many cases, you get out of it more than you put in. And I truly live by that and I believe that.
We will call to order the Lee Summit Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 25th, 2024. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mark Kitchens. Sherri Frazier. Jake Lovelace. Dana Arth.
Present.
Donnie Funk.
Present.
Terry Traptan.
Present.
Tanya Johnna Ford. Chip Tuzinski.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
Thank you. I know no changes to the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as published, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as published.
Motion of a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Could I get a vote on approval of the agenda, please?
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
The agenda has been approved. We are at our portion of our meeting for public comments, for anything outside of the business of the planning commission that's going to take place tonight. Done, so we will move on to our approval. Item number five, approval of our consent agenda. The consent agenda has two items. Item A, approval of the July 11th, 2024 Planning Commission Action Letter and Application PL 2023-147 Vacation of Easement, Village at Discovery Park, Vacation of Drainage Easement, Sanitary Sewer Easement, and Waterline Easement, generally located at the northwest corner of Northeast Colburn Road and Northeast Douglas Street. Intrinsic Development LLC applicant. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Could I get a vote on approval of the consent agenda?
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda has been approved. We will move on. Item number six, our public hearings, our first public hearing. We will open up Application PL 2024-129 Preliminary Development Plan, Duncan Lee Summit, 1399 Northeast Douglas Street. Blue Mount Group LLC applicant. This application is to be continued to a date certain of August 22nd, 2024, at the applicant's request. Mr. Benbrook, could I get a motion from you on this, please?
Sorry about that. Chair, I move to... I propose to continue application. PL 2023, or I'm sorry, 2024-129 Preliminary Development Plan, Duncan Lee Summit. Is that it?
Yep.
I have a motion to continue this application to a date certain of August 22nd, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chair, could we get the original motion?
Yeah, just to clarify, the date is part of your motion. I didn't hear you say that, but the date is part of your motion, the date certain.
Date certain to August 22nd, thank you.
Yes. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I get a vote, please?
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you. And this application has been continued. Item number B on our public hearing, and we will open up Application PL 2024-134 Preliminary Development Plan for QuickTrip Convenience Store with Gas Canopy, 801 Southeast M291 Highway and 702 Southeast Blue Parkway, QuickTrip Corporation applicant. Anyone's going to provide testimony or speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. Thank you. If the applicant has a presentation for us, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Tara Limbach. I am the QuickTrip Real Estate Project Manager. Address 5025 Foxridge Drive, Mission, Kansas, 66202. I was like, if you want my actual address, I am a Lee Summit resident, so if I need to give that, I can.
Five-year Lee Summit resident.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I know I've spoken to a few of you and I know I've been involved with the city on this project. Just a little bit of background about myself. I am new to the store development role at QuickTrip. I have been an employee for over 12 years, so if you recognize me, I probably was in a red polo and khakis running the register or running around a store. So I can promise you, I feel much more comfortable up at the register helping multiple people at one time than I do giving a presentation, but hopefully with time, it'll feel more comfortable. Another thing about myself is I was born and raised in Lee Summit. Graduated high school at Lee Summit West, went on to go to KU, moved back, had my son and purchased my first home close to the Third Street QuickTrip. And I actually just recently bought my second home, which is also in Lee Summit. So I'm very, very excited to be a part of bringing these projects to my hometown. And I was talking about how I was a part of the store team that opened the one on 291, more to the north, and just how prideful I was of being a part of that store team. So I can only imagine how I'm going to feel once these stores are open and running. So thank you so much for listening to a little bit about me. First store, QuickTrip 162. Fun little fact, this store turned 25 years old on July 23rd. So quarter of a century, that store has been there and it's time for a new one. So this location right off 50 and 291. This project really got spearheaded from Lee Summit and MoDOT approaching QuickTrip about the road interchange project. QuickTrip was more than happy to move where we needed to move to. And with us being 25 years old, it's time for a newer building. I would say the number one issue with this current location is the size of the parking lot. I personally don't like to go to this one because I'm afraid I'm going to get hit by another car. So one of our biggest changes in our models, which you've probably seen in your other three QuickTrips that are currently open and remodeled, is how large the parking lots are. The safer we can have the parking lots, the quicker people can get in, find a spot, take care of their business and be on their way, the better it is for everyone. Here's our proposed site plan. You've probably seen it as this store has been in the works for about seven years now. I am the seventh project manager to take this one over and I promised to see it through to construction and opening. Here's kind of an overview of the store. You guys have also probably seen this rendering. This is an image I really wanted to share with everyone as far as relation of the new store with the current old store. So the current canopy and store are shown in red and the new store is shown in black. So you can kind of see how the phasing of doing this project. One, getting the road up to grade and putting the road in. Then we can come in and put the building in and then come back, tear down the current store and canopy and then finish the northernmost part of this site. In your packet and also in the staff report, you'll see that we have asked for two variances on this store. One of them specifically being the setback from right-of-way, which you can kind of see on this dash line where we don't meet that setback requirement of 20 feet. I think in these two little corners is where it's about a 10-foot variance. Here on the left side, it's about a five-foot variance. My engineers have worked pretty hard with the city engineers as well to figure out the best layout. And I know that the MOU is not finalized yet either, so the land swaps haven't been done and that's really going to come with time with MoDOT handing off land and Lee Summit and all of us trading land to make this work. So we're very excited to help push this project forward. I did want to give a little bit of a shout out to my engineer group, Midwest Design Group. Darla Holman, Connor Holman and Jonathan Smith are working very, very diligently to keep this project moving forward and making sure that QuickTrip isn't the one slowing it down, but we're actually the ones helping push it forward. Also in your packet, you'll see the elevations. A few comments that we've addressed from the city that we've been working on and implementing are having some 3D design on every side. So this backside is actually the second variance that I requested to allow for building signs. This one on the side is not technically considered a building sign because it's behind a window. But the three on front plus the one on back would ask for that one extra sign variance. And this will back up to 50 Highway, so this one on the back will be visible from 50 Highway. And then we also added some awnings and glazing on the side to give it some architectural appeal. But everyone has probably been to the QuickTrips that are modeled this way. Another aspect that is new to our design is not having, sorry, I'm trying to try, I'm going to try to go back. Let me go back. Is not having side doors on every side. So if the canopy is off to the side, we're going to allow a side access door. If it is, if the canopy is not on one side, we are not going to have that door. So that's why on this side of the elevation, you do not see that access. That's for safety of our customers, but that is a new design element that you might not have seen in other stores. Here's a few perspective views. This is from right at the corner. With there being, with us being, with roadways all around, we do have significant landscaping, which I think is going to look really nice. And here is also another rendering, which you probably have in your packet. But very excited. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 15.
Exhibits 1 through 15 noted and entered into the record.
So on this first slide, the purpose of this particular site is just to, in a nutshell, capture the intent behind the application. So this application is for the redevelopment of that existing QuickTrip and just general redevelopment of this corner, this northeast quadrant of the US 50 Highway and 291 corridors. The application, as has been mentioned, does include two requests for modifications. With this particular image, you can see that although we are talking about one finished site that will be composed of one single lot, the overall project does actually involve three parcels of property, technically four, if you were to capture some slight modifications that are going to be required for the lawn and leisure facility to realign some driveways with the, once the new road alignment comes through. But with this project, we are talking about some existing MoDOT right-of-way that will be used incorporated to the site, the existing QuickTrip facility and the vacant facility that used to house Wild Child and Hobb Photography. From a zoning perspective, the property is owned CP2. It is surrounded by commercial industrial uses to the north along Seventh Terrace. To the south is the interstate, the east being that vacant facility. Some mix of industrial type facilities, some automotive-related ones further east, as well as lawn and leisure that you see here. To the west, you do see agricultural zoning and that is the existing zoning for the Missouri State Highway Patrol Facility. The CP1 that you see here off to the screen is a portion of the existing Lee Summit High School parking lot. Does have some remnant commercial zoning over the fringes there on 291 Highway, with the rest of the high school being primarily zoned residential. So we are talking about one building, about 20 feet overall height, the canopies. I don't believe we have a final height on those, but they, per drawings provided, they typically range from 18 and a half feet up to 25 feet and a half in height. This will be about slightly more than 5,300 square foot building to replace existing 4,000 or so square foot building to the north. So this is kind of sort of a little bit like the drawing that Ms. Limbach had provided. Although on this one, the images are a little bit reversed in that the darker images are the existing conditions. So here, I wanted to kind of illustrate to kind of better wrap our heads around exactly what the new realignment is going to mean. And if you kind of overlay that over the existing conditions, just to kind of better picture what is involved here. So here, I'll start off to the far southeast corner. This does, here you can see that existing alignment of Blue Parkway with the realignment. And what I did is I highlighted the center line of the future road alignments. As you can see, it swings to the north, to the northwest, comes just off the southwest corner of the existing vacant commercial building and swings just north of the existing QuickTrip facility and the canopy. With the realignment of Seventh Street Terrace, that's going to dip down to create a T-intersection that's basically just going to intersect right, basically smack in the middle of that existing commercial. commercial building through here. So, I was just trying to provide some additional reference point about how this is, how the proposed development sits relative to existing conditions. And here, ghosted in, you can see where the new building is gonna be located, about 150 feet to the south of the existing facility. So, there was a neighborhood meeting held on June 18th. There were three members of the public that were present and discussed were items like architecture, site layout, any, the modifications requests, just general access. But at that time, per the minutes provided by the applicant, there were no objections that were expressed at that meeting. So, this image just here is to provide just better ideas to the type of landscaping that will be provided there along the periphery of the development. As you can see, there's gonna be quite a significant amount of landscaping along the south where the site abuts, the westbound US-50 Highway off-ramp. Here along the west side, you do see some, well, some, basically a tree line that's being proposed. This site is gonna sit lower than 291, so this will be, this will slope down from the 291 side. The elevations you've seen, as has been mentioned, they're, one of the modifications that I'll get into a little bit later relate to the number of total signs. But as you can see here, there's one in the south elevation that'll face the off-frames for US-50 Highway. The north side of the elevation will face the realigned southeast Blue Parkway. And there will be one sign, although it doesn't count toward, as has been mentioned, it doesn't count toward, actually neither of these two images that you see here, neither of them, because they are behind glass and in the window, they don't count toward our allowable sign number. So, the total number of signs per our ordinance is four that they are looking for. Here's just a typical image of the canopy. You're gonna have brick columns and typical kind of metal canopy. So, as I mentioned previously, there are two modifications requests and Ms. Limbach had pointed out where that modification is. So, in red here, I outlined the extent of the proposed parking lot where the 20-foot setback isn't being met. So, it makes up a very small portion of the overall, of the overall site. The areas in which you primarily see the most significant encroachment into that are where you have these champered corners for the MoDOT right-of-way, which isn't unusual that you do have just a very sizable amount of right-of-way and separation along some of these corridors between highway, MoDOT, right-of-way, and those physical improvements and the build sites. So, although there is an encroachment into the 20-foot setback requirement, there's a sizable separation between the parking lots and any of the adjacent travel lanes. So, we're ultimately ending up with more of a separation than you typically would see on a commercial site. The second modification that is being requested, and I've clouded all of the areas on the site where this is being done, is the request to have these mountable lazy-back curbs around the, basically the noses of the landscape islands and around the driveway entrances. And as stated in the staff report, I mean, part of the reason for this is just to help prevent a lot of the rutting from the vehicles that drive over these. All of you, I would assume most of you have at least been to QuickTrip at least once. You're familiar with the fact that there are a number of larger commercial vehicles, use of trailers with, in some cases, it could be operator inability to make some of these turns as easily as others to negotiate through them. But you do see a bit of rutting at some locations, at your typical gas station. So, in this case, in order to help prevent that and maintain the aesthetics and the keeping up of the landscaping through these areas, the request is to have these mountable curbs for which staff is supportive of. And we previously considered and had them granted as approved at the previous two locations where QuickTrips had been redeveloped. Signage, the table here at the bottom illustrates exactly what the breakdown is of square footage for each of the signs that are being proposed. Our ordinance limits signage no more than 10% of any one facade. And on the north facade, where we do have three signs, the total amount of signage makes up no more than 6%. So, that's all compliant in aggregate. And similarly, here on the south facade, you're looking at about 3.6%, so well below the 10% maximum. So, the site here, this is a snapshot of the IGNITE Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. So, as you can see, the area is identified as one that's best suited for commercial. It abuts industrial. Here, off to the northwest, we do have the Activity Center. From a land use perspective, like I said, this facility's been here for about 25 years. It's consistent with other area uses and it's also consistent with types of services that are provided at major highway interchanges. So, there are four conditions of approval. Two of those include the modification request and the last one, number four, that you see here is for the approval of four total attached wall signs per the approved plan. So, staff's recommendation is for approval, but subject to conditions 1 through 4. And I'll yield any questions you may have.
Thank you, Hector. Before I turn this over to the commission, what's the timeline of the MoDOT handoff and the realignment? I mean, is this worthy of saying this is three months down the road? Are we talking a year, two years? I mean, I guess it's my question of why are we having the conversation of this right now if this is two years down the road?
Yep. So, I can go ahead and try to answer that one. I'll start off by saying that QuickTrip has been extremely patient with the entire project. We've been working on the 291 interchange project for five years now or so. The city has some various financing tools in place to fund its portion of the interchange project and relocation of the Troop A facility from the other side of the highway. There's been, I personally spent probably thousands of hours on this project over the period of, since like 2017 or so. And the good news is all of the contracts are in place for the project. And I believe construction's supposed to start in September? Okay, so we don't have a date. So, scratch the date I just said. I don't, sitting here right now, I'm not sure what the date is, but I believe it's soon. Construction start this year. And so, the description that Hector provided of the road realignment, we are just about finished negotiating an agreement with QuickTrip to provide for the exchange of the right-of-way and to make all of these land swaps happen to allow this project to move forward. And so, when we have that in place, then we'll have all the mechanisms to make the land transfers happen so the site can sit where a roadway sits today. And then the roadway that will be built, QuickTrip will be dedicating that to the city. So, this document that we're just about finished negotiating puts all these components in place to make the land swap work. And we already have a cost-share agreement with MoDOT that specifies what land MoDOT's going to give to the city, which the city will transfer to MoDOT in exchange for QuickTrip, I'm sorry, for the city to transfer to QuickTrip for the new store in exchange for QuickTrip dedicating the right-of-way to the project. So, we've got all these things arranged. And everything's basically ready to go later this year. So, I think that's the answer to your question. The construction cycle then is probably, and I don't know the answer to this, but the last I heard, I think it would be finished in '26. So, I think the precise answer to your question, why are you considering this now? Because I think the time is right. We know the location of the store. They're able to present this plan to you. We have all of the contracts in place except for this one final contract, which I presume we will finalize after, you know, as this hearing concludes and as this application moves on to the city council. And so, bottom line, I think the time is ready for you to consider this because this will put in place how the store moves to make this side of the entire project work.
Okay. So, we're still, I mean, appreciate all the efforts and I know the many years of hearing about this and going through this. I mean...
Little bit premature on this until we get contracts and documents solidified. We all know how MoDOT functions.
I do have an answer now.
Years down the road.
Construction's supposed to start in the spring of next year.
Spring of next year.
So, I'm gonna guess, based on the schedules that I've seen and what I believe the construction cycle to be, construction would finish in '27 then. But as the road construction is finished over here, this then allows, so I've worked on other projects that have involved a QuickTrip relocation very similar to this. And I think this is relevant because it brings all of the components that you're thinking about right now to this question, this timing question. I worked with the City of Independence at a large project along Nolan Road and 23rd. And there was a QuickTrip store that was at Nolan and 23rd, and it moved just like this store is going to move. So, it previously existed, they built the new store, and I think, if I remember right, they literally closed, you know, they closed store number one at the end of this day and they opened the next store the very next day and then they demolished this store and it was very seamless. So, there was no interruption in business flow for the company. And it worked very well. And I think that's what they're trying to replicate here. And like I said, I think the time is now to have these plans in place so they mesh with the road plans so when construction's ready to start next year, everything is in place. I think that's the answer to the question on timing.
They couldn't begin construction until after the roads are completely done.
That is correct. And that is exactly some of the really tricky timing elements of this. And that's specified in this agreement, which we will be finalizing as this application moves forward. And you're exactly right. Where the new store sits, that road obviously has to come out of service before they can start. And for that to happen, other things need to happen in the sequence of the timing. And that's the MoDOT part of the, MoDOT handles all of that and the construction timing. So, I can't speak to that, but I'm not sure if that's relevant to your overall question, which is when does this actually happen? I think we have that answer.
But we're still thinking two years.
Correct. Start of construction for the interchange project.
It's better served to bring this application back in a year, year and a half and make sure nothing's changed, nothing happens to change with all of this. I mean, nothing's gonna happen in two years. I don't know why we're even... And then I'll leave it up to my fellow commissioners. They can change my mind. I think we're just a little premature on this store because we don't have contracts signed in place. We're, gotta be a complete road alignment. We know what MoDOT could do. MoDOT can sit on something for a long time. You know, we're very respectful to have QuickTrip here with us. They've been a great partner in our city. I just think we're trying to build something that may not happen for two years, I guess. And I'll leave it up to the commission to, we'll jump to questions. I just was kinda trying to get, wrap my head around contract documents in place. How long before we're ever even gonna start constructing a roadway so they can even build the store?
So, just to maybe, sorry if I can jump in real quick. So, just to better understand, is the concern that this site might not end up in the configuration that's being presented here or?
I mean, that could be a bit of a concern. You know, what if something in our ordinance changes in two years? That's kind of where I'm at. I mean, we may not be asking for, they're asking for a variance for additional sign. Maybe in a year, we get through our whole sign program and we upgrade where they can have four signs. It's not a variance. I mean, I just think we're ahead of something here that is not 1,000% in place.
Sure. I mean, if signage is one of the concerns, I don't...
I was just using that for example, Hector. And it's no, by all means, for the young lady who's here who did a great job in her presentation, it's nothing against QuickTrip, but I just think we're asking for something that's not gonna happen for two years. Let's talk about this in a year and a half. But I'll leave that to the commission and we can jump to them if anybody has any other questions. Oh, go ahead.
Susan Berry, City Traffic Engineer. I got a little bit more information. We are waiting on an A-date from MoDOT, which gives us the authority to acquire right-of-way. So, that could speed up or slow down. We're hopeful it's speed up, but essentially, even if it slows us down, we still would start construction next summer, so.
Construction of the road.
Of the road, yes.
And to be clear, it's construction of the interchange. And I don't know if we tonight, I don't know if anybody here knows precisely, you know, on the east side, the west side. I'm not really sure what happens first and how that affects QuickTrip precisely in that two-year sequence.
Go ahead, Commissioner Szczesny.
This is my question, I guess for Hector and for our city attorney or city staff. What is the, with the relocation of the Highway Patrol, what is their schedule in comparison to the schedule of this? Because I've always been told that that has to go and be rebuilt before they're gonna move out of this one. And then that may take longer than this side, so maybe the contractor would start on this side first. As a civil engineer that does this kind of stuff, I would think it would make sense to realign the road, you know, to get that out of the way as a fairly early thing. And I am familiar with this project very well. So, I do have some concerns. I agree with you on the timing, but I do know that QT is such a good partner to the city too. And they wanna commit to being here. They wanna be ready to go when it goes. So, that's where, I mean, I do have some questions, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Because I think the Highway Patrol building and that timing's gonna also impact the timing of the overall project.
It absolutely does. So, the new Highway Patrol facility is under construction and I, sitting here right now, I don't know the timing. It feels like all of us, myself included, need to have a better understanding of, to the extent that we know this, when is construction, I mean, Susan already said, when construction's gonna start, but what's the level of confidence in that? And I think that's your point. Is it really gonna start then? How long is it gonna take? And then with more precision, when will the QuickTrip store be able to start construction when this road is available? I don't know the answer to that question. And based on the fact that we don't know an A-date as of right now, it's a little bit conjecture, but I feel like we probably, somebody has better information who's not here tonight that could help with that.
Mr. Chairman, too, also with this project, and the city's gonna know, Susan will probably know this, but they're replacing that bridge. And so, at some point, there will be a complete shutdown of this highway across. So, and I don't know if they're gonna phase it and two-phase bridge, but recently they've been doing a lot of just dropping them and completely closing them too, so...
I believe they're gonna carry the traffic up and down the ramps.
Yeah, so...
And so, 291 northbound Hamblin will be closed.
Very similar what they did at Chipman Road.
Chipman.
Yeah. So, with that being said, it also even makes more sense to get that outer road traffic away from where it's in the existing condition to the new relocated. So, I could see that going fast, just to help move that traffic around too. Because once they drop that bridge, the time is going to be very quick. They're gonna have to have it done. I mean, there'll be, there'll be a lot of penalties and such in the contract for MoDOT if, on that bridge timing too. So, I don't know, just some thought on that.
I think my question to the commission, if there's other questions about building design, and 100% agree, QuickTrip's been a great partner. Their buildings look beautiful, they maintain their properties, that kind of thing. We want to continue on with this application or we'd like to maybe ask the applicant if they want to continue this application until we can get some answers on when is this gonna start and when is it gonna be necessary for us to approve this and send it on? Something I'm not comfortable with, two years, two and a half years, three years out. We don't know. If this contract falters, we've committed ourselves to something that may never happen. I'm not saying that it may never happen, but we all understand MoDOT's speed.
Chair, I have, are we in public?
We are in public hearing.
To ask questions about this application?
Yeah, if you can ask.
Because otherwise, we can go into conversation.
I just wanted to make sure while we're in public hearing, if we ask the applicant about...
I have questions about the application.
Why don't you?
But I don't know if you're gonna divert that or not.
Yeah, go ahead.
For staff, this is a preliminary development plan, correct? Does it expire? How long is it good for?
It is good for two years, after which, if there's a final development plan that is, that is approved or submitted for application, it locks in, it locks in that plan.
Right. So, quite possibly, this could come before us again because the site itself won't move forward in construction before the two years is up and it expires. Is that an accurate statement?
So, on the timing, here's what I think is going to happen, but I don't have the dates, like I said. So, we need to get some better dates for this. But in the, you can sort of picture in the sequencing of this, those outer roads will become the trafficway while the bridge is down, like we just talked... way while the bridge is down, like we just talked about, and then eventually, they'll reach the point where that road, where the new store will sit, will come out of service. I'm thinking that is basically sort of in the middle of the construction process, I, I don't have a date, I don't know precisely where, and I'm not sure who has that answer, but I think that road will come out of service as the whole thing is being constructed, which means the QuickTrip store construction can start as soon as that road is out of the way and we've transferred the land, and so that building is being constructed while the other construction is happening, and I suppose, you know, they've done their best that they can with the traffic circulation, because it's gonna be a challenge, and everybody knows that when you have these construction situations. But, I think that store will be under construction while the second half of the interchange is under construction, and so these things will work in concert, but I don't have dates as of right now, hopefully that makes sense.
As a follow-up, and you're probably gonna address this, let me ask this, so as a follow-up, what we're trying to accomplish tonight, it's what it sounds like, is to go through this application so that they can move forward with the, the store application or plans, getting it approved, moving forward, so that when construction of the road starts next spring, which sounds like is kinda what's up, the demo can happen and they can move forward with improving the ground and prepping for construction of the store, is that an accurate statement?
Good evening, Amy Nasseb, Deputy Director of Development, yes, yes, that is correct.
So, next spring, they will be under construction, is what you're telling me?
Some of the, the work, it would be done, the groundwork, though, not, not going vertical or anything yet at that time, but just to answer...
She's saying the groundwork for the store, for QuickTrip.
Just some of the other, like, permit reviews and other things that happen behind the scenes, it can be going, getting underway, and any, there might be some grading and such, but nothing...
Two years before they break up.
But to your other question, I just wanted to follow up with Hector on, the preliminary development plan does expire in two years, as Hector mentioned, if the FDP is filed, then that does lock in the preliminary development plan, but if it isn't filed, you know, to the point of things don't work out or construction don't go through, then the preliminary development plan does expire, and, and then any other preliminary development plan would have to come back before this board.
And the FDP ones, does that expire, or is that locked in for eternity?
The FDP also expires after one year, that's just one year.
Thank you.
I was just hoping to comment a little bit on the timing, I guess another aspect of it is the building behind our QuickTrip, the Wild Child Building, we own that, so one of the first, most crucial parts of getting that new roadway in is us demoing that building, and QuickTrip doesn't feel comfortable moving forward with demoing that building until we know that the plans are accepted by the city. I can promise you, our site plan and our layout is not going to change, it's been pretty locked in, minus the little minor changes here and there, but it's not going to change, and we would really like to be the ones that help push the A date, you know, I've been reaching out to Olson, I've been calling, asking questions, but number one thing on the city's list is for us to demo that building, and then put in the road grade to then let that dirt settle and be ready to put in the road, so it's really us that has to take that first move, so it kind of starts with these plans being accepted.
QuickTrip is willing to do that without an agreement with MoDOT?
That's all being worked out in the MOU.
And so, I'll comment on that again, I don't think QuickTrip has an agreement with MoDOT, it will be in agreement with the city, and like I said, I believe it's mostly finished, in fact, I just sent an email while this hearing was happening to, to check on the status, and when that's finished, then all of the sequencing for the land swaps will be in place, but it's, it's not, you know, it's not finished yet, and I will, I will say this, so now I'm processing all the timing, I think this is probably a safe summary, subject to all of the variables that we talked about, maybe construction doesn't happen in the spring, maybe it's the summer, et cetera, given all those variables, here's, here's what I think is likely, construction starts next year, spring or summer, eventually, this road will come out of service, and I'll just say, in the middle of the construction season, I don't know if it's three months in, six months in, or 18 months, I really don't know, but at some point in the middle of that, and then the construction of the new store can start while the rest of the interchange is being finished, and that has to work in concert with the, the west side too, like you mentioned, the, the troupe relocation and so forth, so all of these things have to come together, but I think, processing then that the PDP is good for two years, if you prove it now, it seems likely that two years from now is roughly about the time the construction would start, and so I think what Amy and Hector are telling you is, if they get their final development plan application in before that two years ends, which sounds certainly to be the case, if everything plays out the way I'm saying with the schedule, then they will be processing that final development plan as this construction is happening, so it's ready to go, so when that road comes out of service in the middle of the construction season, that new building can start, and they've finished the PDP, and they've finished the final development plan, they've received their building permit, the Wild Child Building is long gone, and they've started constructing their new building, and this is all happening while the interchange is being constructed. I think that's the story.
It helps as well, something that Chair Funk mentioned a little bit ago, you know, what, what about the case, in case there is a condition of the UDO that changes in like a year or two period, when the FDP does come in, we still do also do a review of the UDO, and so if there had been any things or any updates, we do review and cover that as well, and then if the PDP does for some reason expire, the city does have the authority to require any updates or changes to reflect any new UDO requirements, so just wanted to throw that in too, if it helps to answer an earlier comment I heard, thank you.
I know the, Hector, Amy, you guys could probably answer this, as the applicant mentioned, and I know, Commissioner Traff, I have a question, what's the city's concern about the Wild Child Building down right now?
That's where the road goes?
Yeah, that we're not starting the road for two years. Guess I'm just trying to put all this timeline together that we're in a rush to do something, I mean, we're gonna tear down a building that could be useful.
Well, I mean, QuickTrip currently owns the property, they own the building, they have no need for that building that we've been made aware of, so if, I mean, that building could go at any time, so there's, there's really no reason to keep, there's no, as far as I know, there's no need for QuickTrip to keep that building.
But it's not a concern to the city?
No.
That the building's still up?
Um, not at this time, no, no.
Commissioner Traff, did you have some questions?
Thank you. I think what I heard you say was, the timeline would start in spring of '25 and could be completed in '27, because I was getting conflicting information about it's starting and gonna be finished, or...
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go ahead and say, generally, I think the, the best summary of the schedule is, starts spring of next year, it's a two-year construction cycle for the full interchange, and then this store will be constructed during that two-year window.
Okay, thank you. So, the road, the realignment of the road would have to be constructed or start construction for that intersection to be completed, correct?
Correct, and this is where we're gonna, this question gets into some construction period traffic circulation issues, which I don't know about, but basically, for that road to come out of service, there still needs to be a connection point through this area, and so I think the red road, and this is where I'm gonna get a little beyond what I know as far as the construction sequencing, but this is from memory, you know, six months ago or so, there needs to be a path for traffic to get through there before the road can come out of service where the new store is going to be located, and so the, so, so the store, the, the building that needs to be demolished for the red road to go in has to be in place for things to function before the road can come out of service where the new store is going to be constructed, and that's why the Wild Child needs to be knocked down pretty quickly, and that's one of the first actions that she just explained to you, and they're not, from a business standpoint, they're not ready to pull the trigger on that until they know everything is locked in, I think that's sort of the bottom line, and it's not fully locked in because we don't even have the A date quite yet, and we don't have the signed agreement.
Thank you for that clarification, I think I also understand you to say, QuickTrip would like to see this move forward and be approved, in good faith that the city is gonna stand behind all the work that they're doing on their end, and so, to get the final agreement signed, which you said you guys are working on.
I, I think so, and, and I'll find more out about that when I hear back on the agreement, but I think all the timing is sort of meshing, which is, they're pursuing their zoning application, it'll be good for two years, they'll be processing the final development plan as soon as everything moves forward, as soon as that's a known quantity, which is the A date and the lands acquired and everything, everybody's checked off and the project's going to happen, but there's variables that are associated with those steps until they actually happen, and as an example, there could be some sort of economic event in the, in, in the nation that stops everything, there could be, you know, who knows what happens during an election cycle, for example, and so there's lots of variables, but everybody's trying to line all the dominos up, so when we're ready to go, you knock the dominos over, and QuickTrip is one of those dominos.
Yeah, well, I think I heard Ms. Limbaugh say that QuickTrip would like to see this move forward in good faith to know when they're finalizing the agreement, is that correct?
Definitely.
Yep.
I don't wanna spend a bunch of money, you know, demolishing a building, and our neighbors who use that parking lot for their, for their business right now, which they rent out from us or lease from us, in good faith, you know, we will keep that building and parking lot up and open for them to use until it absolutely needs to come down, but yes, lots of conversations with the city and Olson about, hey, step number one, that building needs to come down first, so, I know, speaking for QuickTrip, we would really appreciate the support in the preliminary plan, so that way we can feel confident moving on to those next steps, finalizing the MOU and moving forward and not being the ones that slow this project down, so...
If I could tack on to my answer, I'm gonna carry my analogy that I just thought of a little bit farther. The dominos, we're trying to line up dominos and be ready to go and knock them over when, you know, all of the parties are ready, and that's the, the magic of this, which is, it involves, just to let you know what we've lined up, the city, MoDOT, Highway Patrol, Office of Administration, Lee Summit School District, Max Motors, and now QuickTrip, and so I think it's safe today, safe to say, because I'm the one that's worked on all of those steps that I just said, all of those dominos are set, and this is one of the last dominos to set, and then it sits there until MoDOT says we have an A date, and we knock the dominos over and everything proceeds, that's, that's a fair analogy.
Thank you for that, I think I also heard you say, just for clarification, because I think Chair Funk has some valid concerns around the timeline, we've all been waiting on this project to happen, we know it's imminent, but we also know there's been lots of hurdles that you've had to overcome, and I understand you're one of those people jumping the hurdles, so thank you for doing that, you know, I think ultimately, we know this project is going to happen and be complete, I mean, whether or not it's, I think we would all like to see it done sooner rather than later, but I also understand that MoDOT is the main driver in the, in a lot of these dominos falling, and so, I understand QuickTrip's concern, and QuickTrip obviously is a great partner with the city, been in this location 25 years, we wanna continue to see them there in this, with this wonderful new store, so, yeah, I think that, that has been helpful to understand, like, the timing, like, this could all be complete in two years, but we don't know for sure, but we know they're gonna start doing stuff spring of next year, is what you're saying, and so there could be things that QuickTrip property would be involved in, and they, I understand them not wanting to let, give away right-of-way to their property without having an agreement and a plan for where their new store is going, so, I understand that, thank you. I have some specific questions for you, the applicant, you did a lovely job with your presentation, and, you know, it's around landscaping, I think you guys have a very lovely, robust plan to put 106 trees on this property and 184 boxwoods, but my concern around this, and this is not just you, but this is really a conversation that, you know, we're gonna have, we need to have with the city around how we're landscaping between roads and property for business, and, you know, having a line of trees between your property and 291 that are deciduous, we know that we have several months where there's nothing on those trees, and so, I'm concerned, we don't have enough green there around the year, and so I guess my question to you is, you're gonna have plenty of time to work on this, from what I understand, how could we get coniferous evergreen trees in this property landscaping plan? Boxwoods are good, and I see lots of them all over the property, I like the line you guys have around, like, three sides of your building, but I don't, my concern is, why don't we have a burn, why don't we have evergreens between 291 and the property on the corner? I mean, it's very light over there, and I don't know if there's a reason for that, and maybe that's a question for Hector, but I guess one question is, is there a reason why we're light over there, and then, are, is QuickTrip amenable to updating and changing their landscaping plan?
You're speaking on this side why it's not filled in more?
Yeah.
And with more, like, the surrounding?
Yeah.
Well, I, I feel like this setback has something to do with it, we can't put landscaping to the left of this dotted line, but especially with, I mean, from a timing standpoint, we definitely have the opportunity to go back, I'm not the one who makes the decision on some of these things, that's definitely people above me, but we are not against having conversations to, and this hasn't been approved, that we still have to do a final development plan as well, so, we've been working as closely as we can with the city to abide by the code to the best of our ability, and we feel like, I honestly think this is the most landscaping I've seen on any site plan of any of my 19 stores that I'm working on right now, and that is because of all the surrounding roads, but we've, we've really done what we could to, to beef it up everywhere, but it's definitely something I can have a conversation with, with my boss and, and my engineer.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining that you don't have enough, I think you have a lot, and I appreciate the "a lot," but just knowing that if we're gonna create screens around properties, that having evergreens is a good way to do that, and you're still gonna see the store, I know there's a concern, like, oh, you're not gonna see my store, we're gonna know the QuickTrip's there, and you're not gonna have problems with getting people into that store, we, you already know that because of that location, it'll probably double or triple, so, I'm just, and I know this is also a question around our own UDO standards that we have in the city, so some of this sets outside of you, but it is a pretty glaring kind of view, and I did wonder if that dotted line was, you know, could there be conversa, is there a reason, I know MoDOT, that's their right-of-way, and they like to keep those clean, and then not mow them, but...
Yeah. Terry? Mr. Chairman, if I'm gonna build on to Commissioner Traff, that's what he's saying, this, and, and this is something that I don't know if you have an agreement, but are you going to enter an agreement with MoDOT to maintain the right-of-way that's adjacent to their highway? And, and I know Susan may, Susan was over there for quite a long time, she may know how they're thinking, and maybe you wanna talk with the city outside of this, but I'm thinking if you, if you went into an agreement with MoDOT, because you're gonna have this beautiful new building, and then MoDOT's gonna cut it twice a year, so, cut their, their grass twice a year, so, this may be something where you may want to work with MoDOT and maintain that, and then I think if you were able to do that, you could probably enter an agreement to two-plant some trees, or some additional trees on that property, again, that would be between you and MoDOT, and the city could help facilitate that, but that, that's gonna be something that you're gonna wanna think about, because you're gonna have a lot of really beautiful stuff.
So, questions?
Yeah. Okay.
Hector, did you have something to add to this, or, I'm sorry, Susan, did you?
I was just gonna say, a lot of the properties along 291 just voluntarily mow the right-of-way, I don't know that many of them have an agreement, and so I think it's just because the businesses want it to look nice, and they want it mowed more frequently, I don't know that most of them have an agreement.
What about landscaping?
I think landscaping would have to be in agreement, yeah. Keep in mind, though, that as she said, the, the site sits lower than the roadway, so...
Yeah, what's the slope down?
I mean, maybe there's a possibility of changing trees to bushes, because it's, I don't know if that helps or not.
And honestly, I'd rather see evergreens on that line, instead of just...
I can, sorry, one comment, I can verify what she just said on the agreement, from my experience on a few other projects, MoDOT will require an agreement if there's any landscaping besides just grass in the, in the right-of-way, I believe.
Along the 291 front edge here, the, the site's gonna sit six to eight feet, depending on the, the location, about six to eight feet below the adjacent road grade, so there's significant slope or drop between here, so if you did plant some shrubs, which, again, this isn't the final version of this landscape plan, it's gonna be the trees that are gonna be really visible and provide any significant visual screen or just aesthetic improvement.
I think evergreens would be better than boxwoods, but, I, than those trees, just because they, I mean, they'll be lovely when they're big. they'll be lovely when they're big, but they're, especially if it's going to be down. I just think we should be doing a better job in the city of managing landscaping and what it looks like between roads and buildings. And instead of, like, having a lot of cement. And I say, I think, QuickTrip, you've done a great job with this plan, but I see zero evergreens in this plan. So, and 106, so I think there could be some swap outs or something and switch it out, so. But it's good to know that there's a slope of six to eight feet on that ridge. So that is going to create a natural kind of barrier, where it's going to be sunken a little, so you're not going to see it. But, you know, I, I do think we shouldn't be having a larger conversation around this. But related to this plan, I would like to see evergreens. And so it sounds like you guys are amenable to changing the plan, and you have plenty of time to do it. And you may even have time to make an agreement with MoDOT to get an agreement to go into that space. Because I don't know, what's the, what is the distance between that sidewalk and that green space, that, that lawn? Is like 20, 30 feet there?
About right.
And it seemed, I don't know why they wouldn't allow you guys to plant shrubs and evergreens in that area and put trees. But, okay, I think you've answered my question, though. Thank you very much for this lovely plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Art, do you have anything?
I do. I have a question for city staff. When we were talking about the signs on the building, we were talking about the, the- There, okay. The two that are behind the window that are technically not signs, and this, this isn't really necessarily germane to this application. I'm just talking about in general. How do, how is that managed? If peop, if an applicant comes in and puts something behind a window to get more signs? I was just curious about that.
You mean by manage, how do we regulate it, or?
Yeah, because I could see where it could be kind of a grayish area, and maybe not. Maybe you guys handle it on your end.
I mean, the, the ordinance is pretty explicit and says that any, any window sign, so anything placed interior to the, the building or inside of the window is, is not, is not considered a sign. Now, we do have certain concerns if perhaps, let's say, for example, if all of the windows that may be looking out to the exterior for safety reasons, or just you just have so much signage that it's really a safety issue, because customers or employees can't see what may be happening outside of the building. At, at this location here, like, for example, these two, they're, basically the, the glazing is limited to the doors themselves. So we're not concerned about any kind of blocking of views that are created by an excess amount of signage. So I, I don't know if that answers your question, but, yeah.
I was just thinking that if even in existing building, someone could use that, that, this, this ordinance that way and create signs by just doing that. And so I, I was just curious. I've never really thought about it before, so. Okay. Not that these, there's nothing wrong with these, but-
So kind of picturing an example, you're saying it's kind of similar to, like, what grocery stores perhaps tend to use to, where they maybe take butcher paper or something and put it inside, saying, hey, this is on sale. If it's inside of the, if it's inside of the, the building or inside of the, the window, it's not considered a sign under our ordinance.
Okay, okay. All right. I was just curious. Thanks.
Yeah, Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Benner. Hector, a couple of quick questions on the site plan. You mind pulling up? Actually, go back one. Nope, that one there, that'll work. Thank you. The main entrance, close to the corner into the new facility, looks like it's a right in, right out. We all know that people like to hit the quickest exit on their way out, right, as they grab their coffee or whatever it is and take off to work in the morning. So they're going to take a right and then flip into a U-E to get back to the intersection. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
They would have the ability to do that, yes. I don't know how they will actually behave out in the real world, but yes, that, it does allow those right-hand turns out, yes.
Yeah, so a couple of other QuickTrip facilities I visit regularly. Yes, I'm a regular client. Not a whole lot of people use the exits around the back of the storage, right, just because they're not readily in the eyesight, which means probably 70% of the people that are going to make a left turn are going to go out and hit that U-turn, which I can see that being an issue. I don't know if there's a way to adjust that, to get that entrance farther away from the corner where it can be a left exit. But I have a feeling that's going to create a problem. I have a concern about that. Obviously, we have a, a much larger problem in its current configuration. But I can see that being an issue. And since we're taking the time and everybody's taking a lot of investment, I would rather see that resolved now, because I can see that being an issue. And then the second que, oh, go ahead.
Okay. We're not going to move that entrance any further down. We're certainly not going to change it to a full access. That, where their access is, the full access, is pretty much where it needs to stay. As far as U-turns go, we can monitor that. We can put up signs. We can put police out there, knowing it might happen occasionally. But I think in light of the fact that the full access is closer to the building, I don't think it's going to happen quite as much as you think, because a lot of people go there to use the building, not the pumps. And this is very similar to a site that I've been to in Wentzville, Missouri. It's, it's almost identical. And you might make the mistake once, and then you won't make it the next time. And as we know, QuickTrip customers are repeat customers.
So there's going to be a no U-turn sign there?
I, we can make sure there is one, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I, I see that being a failed attempt, but, okay. Second question is, we have a unique situation at this intersection. We have a, a small hotel across the highway, which gets a lot of travelers in. And I'm assuming this QT is going to be a full kitchen QT?
Every store that we build will have a kitchen in it, but doesn't make it, the kitchen is not 24/7.
Right. My, my comment question is, people love your kitchens. They love your food. They're going to come here. People are going to walk from that hotel over to this QuickTrip, because there's no fast food, right? You got an Aldi's, you got a sit-down restaurant. It's going to be frequented by people from that hotel that are going to walk. I see people walking from there quite frequently. We show a sidewalk that, and again, this is a questionable comment, that goes along the street. I would recommend putting in a sidewalk that goes to the parking lot a lot sooner than the nor, well, the northern corner. Because you have people crossing the highway, you're going to walk in and cross the street, and then they're going to cut across the grass, down the six-foot embankment, and there's going to be deterioration of landscape by people crossing it. So I would recommend you put in-
Are you speaking coming from this way? I'm sorry.
Uh, goes plan south, yeah, right through there. So they're going to come there, and then they have to go all the way up and around the parking lot, but, which they're not going to do. They're going to cut across the grass, right, because that's what we'd all do. We'd cut across the grass. So you might consider putting a, a concrete path down to the parking lot, maybe some striping for pedestrian use, because I have a feeling that's going to happen frequently. People enjoy your facilities. They enjoy your food and your services and your drinks. And they, they walk over there already, and when you get a bright new facility, that's even easier to see from that hotel. It's going to be even more frequently used, I think.
If I can speak just a little bit to that. So the reason why it, it's kind of more of a serpentine type of alignment is basically to meet ADA standards, because of the slopes involved. That's really the, the accessible path to get to here. But I, I do understand your point. I, I would imagine at some point it will be kind of a goat path, for lack of a better term-
Yes.
Kind of through there.
And again, nothing that I'm going to ask to be required, just kind of an FYI for ownership, because it would, you could need, put concrete steps there if you wanted to, since you already have an ADA path. Other than that, I agree with this application moving forward today, just because there are so many moving pieces. And we've been waiting, and I know this is a comment, not necessarily a question, but that's all I have to say. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the applicant.
Zinski?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, one question real quick. And Susan, can, can you approach, and we can keep this up. Who's designing this sidewalk as it crosses the MoDOT off-ramp? Because I'd like to see it more hit a 90-degree angle to that curb line and cross more, because with that, such that's real, real large angle there. Yeah, I'd rather, rather see it go straight across and wrap that sidewalk around and then, you know, have it more of a direct shot. Because I, it just, it concerns me having that, that's tight of an angle to, and the crossing there, just for, for people with vision issues and that. And if you had it directed more towards the curb, they could, they'd be able to tell that that's where they were supposed to go, and it'd be safer. And then also, maybe they could do some sort of a stairs down into their development as well, as long as you have the ADA path for others.
I can't speak for sure, but I would think that's part of the MoDOT project. So I can talk to the project manager on that and see if that's something that, that they would entertain, kind of crossing the ramp at a right angle, essentially.
Yeah, I think so. I think it'd be safer. And I, I think I know why they did it the way they did. I don't think it's the best design. But I think it would be safer in the long run.
And it would also shorten the crossing time. You're in the road less.
Exactly. And, and like Randy said, you know, if there's a lot of people that are using this, and I know on the south, I guess you call it the west side of the interchange, I believe, I know there's going to be all new sidewalks and trail, everything on that side, too. So it really is going to be connected. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
For some, for the applicant, some clarification. Working myself to being in favor of moving this forward after David's awesome explanation. And I understand the timelines. I think we're a little premature. But approving this application, what's your timeline on demoing this building? That's important to be demoed.
To be honest with you, I, I can't say a date, because I don't want to say something too early. But again, my QuickTrip will not feel comfortable moving forward until we feel like our plans are approved or accepted by the city in some capacity and the MOU. And I, I know a coworker of mine is working on the MOU, and from what she's told me, we are super, super close to being in agreement. So we were hoping, once the MOU was executed, to then move forward with getting demo bids and-
Now you're confusing me. You just said that QuickTrip is worried about moving forward-
Without having, without having-
So why would we approve this application tonight if QuickTrip is concerned about moving forward?
Well, I just meant with-
Mr. Bushex did a great explanation of giving us the timeline with the dominos. But now you're telling me, QuickTrip doesn't want to, they're sketchy about moving forward until everything's in place. I'm sketchy about approving your application, because you're sketchy that everything's not in place.
I, I was referencing just demoing the building is-
Well, you said a little bit ago that it was vital to demo this building-
Per, to start the project. That's got to be the number-
Start the project, but you said QuickTrip's not going to do it, because they're uncertain about the MOU that you're waiting on. So I'm, I guess you're going to have to help me here to understand that it's important for us to approve this. I understand, I think the city has been a great partner. I think QuickTrip is, is an awesome organization. We're very thankful you guys are here in many locations around our city. But we're looking at a project two years down the road. You wanted to prove, because you mentioned earlier that you need to tear down this building for this to happen. But now you're telling me you're not tearing down the building, because you guys are uncertain about something being approved for this project to move forward. That's where I'm confused.
Well, sorry to speak back and forth on that. As far as having initial approval of a preliminary plan is where, and the MOU being in place is where QuickTrip would feel comfortable moving forward, full steam ahead, knowing that we have the city's support on the proposed plans that we have.
So us approving this tonight, you guys aren't doing anything until something else happens. So would it be best if we discontinued this application until you, QuickTrip was comfortable that everything was going to move forward? We come back, we approve it, and the dominos start falling?
That, that's completely up to you. We would love to, to get approval on just this first step and to keep moving forward. You know, we're, we're working out temporary utilities, temporary power, temporary grease interceptors. We have all of that planned out and have been working very, very hard on this project. We have no intentions of slowing down. We have no intentions of not, you know, of holding it up because of the city. We want to be the ones that are making it easy for the city.
I think, in my opinion, I'm not speaking for the rest of my commissioners, we want to make it easy for QuickTrip, but I don't want to approve a project that you're uncertain about doing, because there's something that's not in place.
I just had a thought. So the agreement that we're just about finished negotiating, I just pulled it up. The only thing it says about demolition, and I just verified this, is that it puts the obligation to do the demolition on QuickTrip. It doesn't speak to any, it doesn't talk about the demolition in more detail, because that actually has to happen before the road project can happen. Pretty straightforward. But your point's a good one, which is we don't have a signed agreement, and the dilemma appears to be the applicant's now stating they're not, just what you said. They're not going to move forward with demolition until the agreement's signed, and so there's some uncertainty. I, I get it. Here's the thought that I just had. When we're finished with this agreement, negotiating it, it will have to go to the city council for approval. It'll have to be approved by ordinance. And for example, if QuickTrip says, and I just sent an email, I told you. Let's say we finish in a couple of weeks. This agreement could be on the agenda, let's say, September. I'm just going to be optimistic and say we have this finished, and it's on the council agenda in September. One of the options could be that you add a condition tonight that, that, now I'm just going to make this up, but I think this is the sentiment of what you're trying to say, which is you'd be recommending to the city council that they don't act on this until that agreement's finalized. I think that's maybe what you're, where this is going.
That would be almost precisely of what I'm looking at, because I don't, at our level, yes, we can approve their, recommend approval of their preliminary development plan. I'm all for it. But I'm hearing from the applicant that they're not doing anything until they have signed agreements.
Right.
Which I wholeheartedly don't blame you for doing that. So I would wholeheartedly agree that the city does not give them a preliminary development plan until they're in agreement that they're going to do their project.
So that could be your condition, then. If you wanted to add a condition that, I mean, there's lots of ways you can say it, but that's the sentiment, that you're recommending to the city council that they don't act on this until that agreement is finalized. Maybe that's sufficient enough or executed, however you like to say it. But the intention is that agreement needs to be finalized for everybody to be comfortable. And then, now that domino, we will have finally, put the final two dominos in place sequentially. Zoning agreement, we're done. There's probably a few other things I'm forgetting at the moment. There's probably a couple other dominos somewhere. But now we've taken care of the QuickTrip and that stack of dominos, and it's ready to. But that might address your, that condition, your, your additional recommendation tonight might address that issue for the city council. Perfect.
Do you know if that agreement would be signed and presented to city council on August 20th, when this is proposed to have a first reading?
I, I do not, but it's conceivable. For example, if QuickTrip says we're done, then yes. The answer is yes. If they say we still have language to discuss, then the answer might be no.
Have a first reading on the 20th and the ordinance on the, the September 3rd.
It's conceivable, depending on QuickTrip's response, yes. And I'm, they're listening to this, so this should all come together, hopefully.
For the applicant, are you, are you good with that? I mean, I want to, we, we want to pay, play fair, but we also, we're both, I don't want you and I, or you and this commission to be at a stalemate here, where we just throw our hands up and say, we'll continue this to another day. If we say this is only good for city council not to act on this until you have what you want to act on?
No, I, I'm, like I said, I'm the seventh person to take over this project, so there's a lot that's happened before. Yes, as, I think that that's-
I think you're doing an awesome job.
Well, thank you.
We, we want to, want to make sure, as David explained, we want these dominos- We, we want to, we want to make sure, as David explained, we want these dominos to fall.
Yeah.
But we don't want to approve a plan that could be two years down the road, or approve something that you guys aren't comfortable with moving forward with right now, because you don't have all the signed documents. So we will move this forward to, as long as my fellow commissioners are good with it, we will move it forward to city council with a recommendation of approval. However, there will be a condition that they don't act on this until all agreements are in place.
I'm totally fine with that, because I think it would make QuickTrip and the city feel best about it. So I'm, I'm fine with that condition.
Chaffton?
I have a question about my landscaping change. Do I need to make a condition for that, or am I to trust the city to enact that landscaping change?
So just to be clear, you're talking about landscaping in the MoDOT right-of-way or something else?
No, I mean, I would strongly encourage QuickTrip to negotiate a deal with MoDOT for landscaping encroachment and to the easement, but that is, I guess, their decision. I'm just talking about the landscaping that they currently have slated in the, their own right-of-way, between the MoDOT right-of-way and where they have, I mean, lovely landscaping, but just the, the deciduous trees versus the evergreens that I think would be more appropriate.
And, and so to answer your question, I think it's really your comfort level, meaning, do you want to add another condition or not? And you could add a second recommendation to the city council that the landscaping be changed, if you'd like to do that. But I think that it will probably take care of itself, and that maybe is what Amy's going to talk about.
Correct. And with the FDP, we can do that. With the notes that we had taken, was that you were looking more of a mix of deciduous and evergreens, you have year-round foliage, and there's not empty spots of bareness with no landscaping burn, which is the whole intent in the first place, over on that side of the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I know you guys do an awesome job, so I will trust that when I see this built, there's going to be evergreens on that site. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission before we close the public hearing? We will close the public hearing and open up for any comments. Mr. Chaffton, you're going to read this motion. For procedural-wise, David, do we need to amend the, this, or can we just read, can Terry make the motion with the condition that city council does not act on this until all agreements are placed?
Sorry, just a minute.
Okay, um, okay. So the one thing that she just reminded me is, we still need to give the public opportunity to comment.
Oh, my, my apologies.
But now, back to your point, if everybody is in agreement on the condition, then you can just add it to your main motion. And my recommendation in the past is, if it's controversial, it's good to do it as a second separate motion, then you have a separate vote. But if everybody's in agreement, add it, add it to the main motion.
We will, I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public on this application? Come on down. I don't, yeah, we're going to have to swear you in. I don't think you swore in at the beginning of this. So come on down, and she'll swear you in. Yep, that's what we have to do. Come right up here to this little senator's thing and give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Mark Sandy. I live here in Lee Summit on 309 Northwest Rock Hill Circle. I own the 910-7 Terrace Building. And my question is, I'm confused on, as they turn, I think you guys were calling it the red route, where the road comes at an angle through there, that they're going to have 97 Terrace tee into that. What happens to the rest of it that's in front of my building, that currently goes straight up to 291? I don't know what happens to that. So I just wanted some clarification on that. The other question I had is elevation, elevation, I think they answered that. They're not going to raise all this property. It's going to be more the natural flow of the property, I hope. That was my other question, is if there was going to be an elevation change in front of my building that would lift QuickTrip very high and block the view of my building. Those are my two questions.
Perfect. Hector, could you take both of those questions?
Let's see what image I have here. Okay, so here is kind of a bird's eye view of what the future alignment will look like. So 7 Terrace comes in, kind of in its current east-west orientation, and I don't remember exactly which building would be the gentleman's here, but it will dip down here. So there will be a, like, as you can call it, kind of a cul-de-sac, or, I don't know if that, what that, how that will terminate based off this, but there will be continued access through here that will be provided. As far as the site, again, it's, it's going to sit lower than the road, so I don't know, I don't know if Susan can speak a little bit better to what, what type of grading may be done here, but this, again, this site is going to sit about six to eight feet lower than, than the 291 travel lanes. So it, it, they won't be raising up the site now.
Can I follow with a different question?
Sure, come on down.
Hector, there's a, there's a contour plan in the, in the packets that we had, so if you wanted to pull that out, you could...
I'm just not sure if, how far it extended off, off of here.
Actually, in the picture that you just had, I would like to have it back up when you're done.
Okay. I've got a different one that I can pull up, but yeah.
Okay. The additional question I have is, can I use the cursor here?
Sure.
Okay, this is my building right here. And I'm not sure what all is going on up here, but why did they not just connect this in somehow and put some other connection instead of just dead-ending, dead-ending that? I'm not sure why that wasn't somehow connected in. Okay, thank you.
So that goes into our access management code. Basically, it's the distance between the 291 intersection and basically the, the distance from 291 to where you say that would connect. And so basically, it just helps traffic flow better and not congest this intersection. If we would have made the access, if you remember, there's a median that comes down through here. So an access over here would have been right in, right out, and so we did not permit that. We, we allowed to use kind of a access road, I guess is what I'd call it, to access those properties. Does that answer?
Mr. Chairman, from the way the existing plan looks, it looks like 7 Terrace in front of that property is roughly at the same elevation. It's not being impacted. It's existing pavement. There's going to be a little work outside the entrance, right there, at the big T intersection and where it comes back to 7 Terrace, but, but it looks like 7 Terrace is roughly about the same elevation as it is.
Perfect.
Hi, Sue Piles, Development Engineering Manager. I also wanted to point out that, I don't know how to work, to make a point up there.
Oh, it's this one, sorry.
Okay. Right there, this triangle that's right in here, this is detention basin, dry detention basin. So this, that, that area will be, you know, lower, right in there, just because it's the detention basin. So I just want to point out that it's going to have an area existing, then lower, and then come up. So it's going to have some relief to that, that section of ground.
The entrances to his buildings are all going to be the same elevation where they are now, yeah.
Anything else from the public?
Yes, sir.
Come on up here, there. Give us your name and address, please.
My name's Steve Craft. My family owns the lawn and leisure business at 706 Southeast Blue Parkway. You had discussed this triangular piece as being a detention basin. Is this triangular piece also going to be a detention basin? Oh, I sprung that one.
Yes, I believe so.
You guys could practice your mowing around the MoDOT QuickTrip stuff.
Yes, I believe it's also going to be a small, a small dry detention basin in that location. The main one's going to be the other one, the, the west one.
You guys are cutting our mower testing grounds in half here.
I'm not going to be able to connect to it.
That's going to be a pretty good slope.
You know where the cable is to that? Yeah, well, that's true. I could do that.
Yeah.
Yep, so here you see, yeah, you got storm going under the road, outlet here, drain down there, and then go across.
And out, coming in here, and then going out over here also.
Mm-hmm.
Into the existing storm system.
Can you point this one, this one here to me one more time?
S.
And then the elevation of this area right here, it'll be lower than road?
Yeah, this is...
1027, kind of...
1027 there, 1022 down.
I'm talking on the south side of the road.
Oh, on the south side, it goes up. The road right here is lower than, than the parking lot.
About almost 11 feet lower.
Okay.
But this up here is untouched. That's all that's existing.
So is it safe to say that their landscaping along the south edge of QuickTrip is going to be higher than road elevation at point?
Yes.
On this, well, on the south edge of QuickTrip is the 291.
Well, it's 50 highway.
50.
Yeah.
It's lower than...
Barely flat. Okay, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Absolutely. Sorry, I couldn't see it real.
Anything else from the public as far as questions for staff or the applicant? None. We will close the public hearing, have a discussion or a motion. Mr. Chaff, anybody get any discussion points? Are we good with the condition?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I would like to agree. I'm good with the condition, too.
So the, just to be clear on the condition that we're adding, condition, it's condition four, I believe. Oh, it's five?
Four.
Clarification, that we're going to recommend approval, but we're just adding condition five, which is to align or tether this with the city's approval of the MOU agreement between QuickTrip and the city?
Yes, that's the name of it.
All right. Any other? I can go ahead if you're ready.
Go for it.
Chair, I recommend, I move to recommend approval of application PL 2024-134, Preliminary Development Plan for QuickTrip Convenience Store with Gas Canopy 801 Southeast Missouri 291 Highway and 702 Southeast Blue Parkway. QuickTrip Corporation applicant with an additional condition five to tether this application for approval to city council with the MOU agreement between QuickTrip and the city of Lee Summit.
Yeah, I like, I like that word, too, tether. I wouldn't have said it that way, but I like your, your form better than I would have written that.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, could I get a vote, please?
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Chaffton?
Yes.
Chip Tzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
This application has been recommended for approval, and we will now move on to item C in our public hearings, and we will open up application PL 2024-135, Preliminary Development Plan, excuse me, for QuickTrip Convenience Store with Gas Canopy 1001 and 1005 Southwest Blue Parkway. QuickTrip applicant. Anyone wishing to provide testimony or speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. One more time, we have to have your name and address for the record, please.
So sorry. Tara Limbach, 5025 Foxridge Drive, Mission, Kansas, 66202. Hello again. This slideshow will look very similar to the last one, as yes, another QuickTrip remodel. This store number is 183. My fun fact for you is, this store will turn 27 years old on 9/11, which I didn't realize that was the anniversary date for this one. Here's the proposed location. We did acquire the car wash here at the corner of Second and Blue Parkway, so now we have both lots, which we will be using for development. Here's our proposed site plan. Again, this one will be, as we like to call it, a phased rebuild. So my next slide will show you kind of the current store, current canopy, and the current car wash that is closed right now. So as you can see, this one theoretically should be very simple for us to phase, building the store, new canopy while still operating the open store. And then, once this one is ready to go, then demolition this side. Here are some renderings, which you probably have in your packet from staff, but I would like to commend the city of Lee Summit. I know Dan facilitates calls for me all the time. Dan and Hector have been extremely helpful in answering my questions and helping me work through code and staying compliant. So for that, we'll move on to...
Thank you.
It's me again. Hello. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 16.
Exhibits 1 through 16 noted and entered into the record.
There are a number of parallels between this project and the previous project. Biggest difference is that there is no change to any surrounding road geometries involved here, so we're just working within the parameters of these two existing lots. So Third Street QuickTrip, Second Street slash Blue Parkway serves as a border between residential development to the north, to the south. We're bounded by Third Street slash US 50 Highway. We've got some commercial lots to the immediate west of here with one industrial building, couple other commercial buildings a little bit off the screen. And again, you've got the on-ramps, northbound on-ramps on US 50 Highway, well, I guess probably considered westbound. East of here, we have the existing retail center, all zoned commercial or CP2. So this image, well, I guess some of the quick stats, we're still looking at the same square footage building, just about 5,300 square feet, same amount of parking, 50 spaces. Impervious coverage is, is very similar. This image I provided, Miss Limbach did provide the one that did have the boxes. This image I liked a little bit, because it kind of ghosted in the existing aerial underneath it to kind of help, again, orient everyone to where we're talking about. So the new building and canopy... So the new building and canopy will just basically be dropped right on top of the existing car wash building. Once that occurs, like she mentioned, it's going to be a phased redevelopment. When these buildings go online, then they will be able to take the, the building on the, on the south side and the canopy offline. So there was a neighborhood meeting held on the, on the 18th. There were four members of the public. Some of the concern, well, not concerns, the, the topics or discussion centered around just informative, informing the, the general public about what the site layout will mean in terms of any potential changes to existing access and road geometries. Again, no changes to the road geometry, but there will be a slight shift in this center drive that serves Blue Parkway. So this existing drive, the drive on, on current property sits right around this location, with this being the new canopy. So it's going to have to shift about 35, 50 feet to the south in order to bring it into alignment with that access road or that drive aisle that'll enter the site and, and provide circulation around the south side of the canopy and the south side of the, of the new C store building. But beyond that, these two existing curb cuts at the two diagonal ends of the site will remain unchanged. So it's just going to be this metal drive that'll shift down some. Again, noting some of the concerns regarding landscaping and coniferous and deciduous, we will, that's something that we'll look at at the final development plan stage. But again, here you can see the significant amount of landscaping that's being provided, particularly along the north side, where we do start bordering the, the residential development to the north side on the opposite side of Blue Parkway slash Second Street. From elevations perspective, similar to the other building, one difference being that the previous facility did have the one side entrance. This building is only proposed to have the two entrances on the front facade, and so there'll be no side entries or any rear entry at this building. Canopy, typical. There are two modifications. The first one is to the parking lot setback. Similar to the other one, the minimum setback requirement from the public right of way is, is 20 feet. And at this location, they are requesting a, basically a 10-foot setback. And this image here, in, in red, you can see the existing curb alignment for the car wash facility. And blue would be the reconfigured curb line around the northeast corner of the, of the canopy area. So here, as I mentioned, the red is existing. So along the QuickTrip site, the existing QuickTrip site, they will be maintaining that existing border for the parking lot boundary alignment. So what they're looking to do is basically to match what you have on, on the south side of the facility. They're, they're keeping that alignment, and they want to maintain it. Being able to provide that alignment, as shown here around the, in, in blue, I don't know how well you can see here dashed in the boundary or the, the limits of, of the canopy run through here. So allowing them to push that curb line to 10 feet to match the existing curb line to the south will allow vehicles to circulate, you know, in both directions around that corner of the canopy. Similar to the other site, they are looking to do mountable curbs, lazyback mountable curbs at various locations. Again, the noses of Landscape Island and at all of the drive entrances. We are at the periphery of the downtown Activity Center area at a significant intersection, Third Street and 50 Highway. So around, so it's not unusual to see this type of service, again, offered at a major intersection. And particularly, we do see a lot of these more traditional commercial developments there along that, that periphery of the, of the downtown area, whereas once you get further into the site, particularly down further east along the Third Street corridor, you do see more commercial developments that's perhaps consistent with a historic downtown. But here, you've got the interface of the historic downtown versus highway frontage and the transition to more traditional suburban development on the other side of 50 Highway. There are three conditions of approval associated with this one. Again, conditions two and three do cover the modification requests that were previously discussed. So I will yield to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Hector. Everybody got really bored with us and they all left, so we don't have anybody from the public left to ask any questions. So we will jump to the commission. Commissioner Arth, any questions while we're in a public hearing?
Not right now.
Commissioner Traptan?
Yeah, I'm not going to go into my diatribe about landscaping again. I think I made my point earlier. I have the same comment about this. I mean, you guys have a standard landscaping plan, it looks like, that you implement sites. Clearly, evergreens are not popular with your landscape architect, so maybe that's something to have a conversation with him about. My question, though, about this application, what the landscaping relates to, I mean, I understand there, I think, I think there was, you know, you're leaving a big green space there between the highway and your new store, but you're landscaping up to the highway, and so clearly you own that land. And so that's like intentional that you guys are doing that as part of your development of this site, or redevelopment of the site. I will say, this is my QuickTrip, so I go here quite a bit, so I do love the store, so I will continue, although you took out my favorite car wash, so I was a little sad about that. I like squeaky clean. Squeaky clean's no more. So I would just like for you guys to consider something there landscaping wise. My question, actually, I see the improvements for the walkway on Second Street and Blue Parkway, where you're adding the crosswalks there. But I don't see them on the other end and kind of, I know there's going to be walking and biking traffic from Third Street, and so I'm curious as to why the sidewalk ends and there's not like kind of a sidewalk going around. You know, we know we need bike path and all that kind of stuff like you have on the other. I'm guessing MODOT's not involved in this project.
Susan Berry, City Traffic Engineer. That's correct. Right now, there's no pedestrian or bike facilities that go along Third Street underneath US 50. It's a desire of the city to get that connection underneath the highway, but as of now, it does not connect. So what we did is we, we requested that the sidewalk go to the property line of QuickTrip, knowing that if it went along Third Street, it doesn't connect to anything. Both Blue Parkway and Second Street are MODOT's roadways. So this, this part right here, it's technically Blue Parkway, and then this is Blue Parkway. Basically, all four sides of this are MODOT roadways. So we got, yeah, we got the sidewalk that we felt would be beneficial now, knowing that there's more in the future that we could possibly get in, but it would be, it would be done with the project that gets sidewalk or bike facilities underneath 50 Highway.
Oh, I know there's improvement of Third Street happening between Blue Parkway to downtown or to Jefferson.
There is.
And so I know there's sidewalks and walkways going in.
There is, but that project stops just shy of this intersection right here at the bottom of your screen, because that is MODOT's intersection. And so the sidewalks pretty much stop right about there. Not ideal. We realize it's not ideal, but we, we try to get as much as we can.
No pedestrians are going to cross that intersection right there from, like, they're going to cross from Third Street over to Blue Parkway, and they're going to go to QuickTrip. And so what you're saying is we have two sections now. The sidewalks are going to end on Third Street and Blue Parkway and create an unsafe walk across for pedestrians, even though we know, like, we're fixing it on Second Street, which the MODOT owns, but we're not fixing it for a, a walk path from those two sidewalks, at least, at a minimum. Right? We're leaving that as an unsafe pedestrian.
That is going to be a gap in the sidewalks, yes. One thing they could do is walk through the parking lot of the strip center and then come out this way. Not ideal. But we expect people will do that.
We know how busy that intersection is, and people are not, cars are not friendly in that intersection. Drive it all the time. I just think it's a mess for us to not put some kind of walkway connection. If we're doing it on Second Street and Blue Parkway, which we know MODOT owns already, why wouldn't we create some kind of walkway safety feature for pedestrians across Blue Parkway to Third Street, where we know people are going to walk probably from that dispensary down to QuickTrip? We know. We know this to be true.
So is it, sorry, Terry, just to go with what you're going off with.
I guess like my question's answered, but I'm wondering if we, there needs to be more.
Standard to have, isn't there standard painted crosswalk at that intersection with buttons?
I don't believe there is. Because you don't put buttons and crosswalks unless you have sidewalks and ADA ramps to receive the traffic.
I'll ask Commissioner Traptan.
Well, I got the answer. It's not the one I wanted, and I'm not quite sure there's clarification on a solution. So I, I feel like the city is just okay leaving.
It's not the city's choice at that intersection, correct?
It's MODOT's. You're correct. It's MODOT's intersection. But MODOT is improving the walkway on Second, but not on Third, and so that's my concern.
So the applicant is actually improving the Second and Blue, and Blue Parkway at our request, because that will provide connectivity to the north side of Second Street. And then we have another project on Ward that is adding some additional sidewalk to Second Street. And so we're, we're trying to make that connection through the neighborhood. We're just not getting the connection to Third Street.
Yeah, and you're saying you're not going to require them to improve the sidewalk and make a cross at that intersection because there's no sidewalk on the other side to receive it, so.
That's correct.
But wouldn't it be better to have sidewalk, crossway improvement there, even if it goes to no sidewalk on the other side versus nothing?
Third Street?
Saying it will stop at Third Street short of that intersection.
Stop short, coming, if it was coming west on Third Street, it stops at Blue Parkway?
I don't know where the improvement on Third Street is going to.
Stops, I guess that's it there.
Oh, it stops right there?
I think in order to get the pedestrian crossing, some revamp to the signal would be required, and we did not require that of the applicant.
And I guess maybe to answer a previous question I thought I heard was, or a concern was, that we're not requiring the applicant. I guess if we were to place a condition on this that they provided, it's not our facility, so we basically be placing a condition on a third party to do something that we have no control over.
Well, how did we get the agreement from MODOT on the Second Street crosswalk?
I think that's because the applicant, out of the goodness of their heart, agreed to do it.
I think that was, that was an easier crosswalk to put in, and so.
Because there's no light involved and.
And the, and the grades were a little bit easier to work with.
If I offered you to go to dinner and I said, "You pay," you'd probably say, "No, I don't think so." But if I said, "I pay," you would say, "Heck, yeah, I'm going to dinner," so that's kind of the situation.
I know that we're working to get improvement on Third Street. It's down the road, probably 10 years or more. But I know we're improving Third Street. You're saying we're not doing anything more to then just taking that sidewalk there. I feel like it is a, people are going to cross there. We know this to be true. They may walk down a little on the grass and cross over where the. We have cameras at that intersection?
That's MODOT's intersection. We would have detection cameras, but not, nothing that records.
So there's nothing we could, you're saying that there's nothing we can do with MODOT to improve that little walkway, to improve for a walkway?
Could you give Terry's MODOT's phone number?
It has a direct line to MODOT.
I can't speak for MODOT, but I, this is going to be low on their priority list of things to improve.
I think we all feel you, and we're all in agreement with you.
Well, I'm just noting, we're probably going to have people crossing there unsafely, so. All right, and they probably are, yes. So thank you. All right, no further questions.
Commissioner Tzatzinsky?
Mr. Chairman, hey, Susan, you got a second? I, I know it's down the road a bit, but is there any, do you have any update on when Third Street interchange is even remotely going to be upgraded? Is there even any thoughts on that?
There's not any plan to upgrade the interchange. Two years ago, MODOT put in an application for STP funds, federal funds. That was just to get the pedestrian and bike traffic through, so kind of putting them behind the bridge columns. So that was kind of an interim fix. Obviously, the whole interchange needs to be redone, very costly. Lots of problems, definitely on the west side of, west side of that intersection.
Did that STP, did it pass? Did it not?
It did not get funded.
So, yeah, okay.
And then they did not make the application this cycle.
So it's, it's.
It's still a priority of the city.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, thank you, Susan. This is also, I would like to say my QT, but I know it's their QT, but I frequent it quite a bit. There's a lot of construction vehicles and companies that park in the existing condition along, you know, the front of it. And, and I saw, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you're actually reducing the number of pumps that are going in with this new development by two? Could you tell me why, first off, on that one, but then also, is there a way to put no parking signs or something that, that those trucks can actually now, in the future, use the new parking lot? As opposed, because there really isn't a lot of parking in the existing condition. There isn't in the existing condition for like trucks with trailers and that to park. But is there a way that we can get them from parking right there in front of the pumps? Because I could just see them doing the same thing as what they did before and get them to actually park, pull through the, the parking lots, because you know, it's just, it's so hard, because like I go in there and, and, you know, I like to pull through because it's on my left-hand side, my gas tank, you know, the hole, and so. It'd be nice to not have them parking there. It'd be nice for them actually use the spots.
Yeah, I think our idea behind putting these floating parks was to really encourage, you know, some of the larger trucks and trailers to be over on the side. I honestly don't know what we can do as far as no parking allowed. That, I can't promise that. That's definitely something I can speak with my team about. But yeah, we are definitely hopeful by adding, and we've definitely upped the parking spot, so knowing that you have this whole frontage, a lot of people, and with the pump numbers, with our, obviously, we estimate sales, but with this store being open for almost 27 years, we know what the sales volumes have been consistently, and eight pumps more than sufficiently covers those gas sales. But I do like the idea of having no parking signs over here, but we were really hoping to, that they would, in a, some fashion, line up in the floating parks.
Have you noticed that, like especially on the one at Woods Chapel where you have?
Definitely during lunch, you have all the, you know, the lawn mowers and the Amazon trucks.
Yeah.
So we're hoping that, that they stay more on this side. Is kind of the idea of making that, those floating parks be a significant area.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is probably for staff. Is there any reason we're keeping the planned west drive entry? It seems kind of close to the corner. They're already proposing to completely tear it.
It seems kinda close to the corner, they're already proposing to completely tear it out and redo it, curb and gutter, why are we not moving it away from the corner or just sliding the center one over to accommodate and getting rid of the third one?
Well, as far as, I guess, was, was one of the options you mentioned, why not just not shift this one further?
Shift it to Plan West and eliminate the third one.
I see.
And then that way, the third one isn't right on top of the corner.
Okay, so maybe putting, like, this over here, is that...
I mean, because already, they're building three, right? They're tearing out the two existing ones, they're showing a new curb and gutter, it would save them money to only do two, and I don't see what that third one serves.
Let me get this. Okay, so this one here...
Yeah, but they're, yeah, but they're still showing to tear it out and rebuild it.
Yeah. So, this one here is not moving, this one here is not moving, this one is shifting, I'm using the center line, it's shifting from here to here.
Yeah, so go to the left one?
Right, this one.
Why are we leaving that one there if they're rebuilding it? Why aren't we moving it away from the corner?
A QuickTrip standpoint, so, yes, these two are existing, and I know I've heard a few of you mention that this is your QuickTrip, so if we were to remove this entrance or this access, which is only a right-in, right-out, then we're gonna see a stacking, stacking of people waiting to possibly turn left, and then you have your people that wanna go right, that are then waiting behind a car that's waiting to go the other way, so this right-in, right-out is gonna help that flow of traffic of getting people out easier. It's existing and it works well, and MoDOT was supportive of it, but yes, this one was realigned.
Yeah, I understand it's existing, but you're showing to tear out all the curb and gutter and redo it, right?
And the other, the other reasoning to not get rid of this one is, this is a, a good sizable pad.
That you're planning to sell.
Or that we plan to develop on.
So, you're gonna increase traffic on that corner? Making the problem exacerbate?
I, I don't, I don't believe that to be true, but QuickTrip has started to shift into different business models, we recently acquired a bubble bath company that's out of Texas, we also recently got into the medical field and opened urgent care clinics called QuickMeds, and to be honest with you, who knows what business we're gonna be in. Also, having this, having this spot and having this entrance would allow for a user, and it could be, if we end up not developing, that it, we say, "Hey, City of Lee Summit, what would you like to see here?" You know, what kind of business would you like us to bring in, to put on this corner? So, I really think that this access needs to stay for the, the unknown, but also to help with the flow of traffic to get people in and out quicker and safer.
So, we could potentially see a car wash there, is what I'm hearing.
You could potentially.
Hey, I have a problem with that. I have a problem with that much traffic, that much stacking, that close to the corner. So, again, I guess my question is, is what is our minimum requirement to get that away from the corner? I know it's existing, but it's being rebuilt, and when something gets rebuilt, we get to relook at it, so do we meet the minimum required from that corner?
I, I think that would be probably MoDOT, but we did do a traffic memo for MoDOT, and they, they approved our traffic memo.
Since the existing was a QuickTrip and the new is a QuickTrip, we didn't require a traffic impact study, uh, MoDOT didn't require a traffic impact study, the traffic, you know, might increase a little bit, but between the car wash and the existing QuickTrip, it wasn't a significant enough, you know, concern that they needed to do a full study. So, they did a traffic memo, which kinda evaluated access points and anything that was existing, and they didn't have a problem with that. Again, that is a right, right-in, right-out, and it does help the circulation of the site.
Yeah, so we're not gonna see any issues with that, if future use, I...
When that comes in for development, we'll take a look at it, and we'll see how much traffic whatever goes in there generates, and then we'll make the decision whether or not we require a traffic study, traffic memo, and then, of course, we still have to work with MoDOT because they're the one that permits these access points.
So, being familiar with QuickTrip, being familiar with the problem that was discussed earlier with the landscape trucks and Amazon, uh, you know where they're gonna park, they're gonna park between those two access points, they're gonna pull in because it's gonna be very, it's gonna be away from the pumps, they're gonna park along the curbs on long both sides, because they know it's a right-in, right-out, and then when they come out to make a left-hand turn, they're gonna block traffic, so, uh, that's fine, I understand MoDOT is partially in control here, but I see this being not a huge problem, but a problem at times, especially during rush hour traffic, seven to eight o'clock in the morning, when you get those large land straight, uh, trucks coming through. But yeah, I, I think we should have a second look at that, maybe a conversation with MoDOT, see if we can make that a little safer. That's all, Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Here, we put some picnic tables over there, and they all park along the curb, and they can eat their lunch. The entrance location... Going out onto Second Street, that's the, that's basically the original car wash, correct? They're just rebuilding that in the process of the site work.
That is correct, yeah.
Anything else from the Commission while we're in public hearing? Anything? I will look for the public again one more time. We will close the public hearing, and we will open up for discussion or a motion.
Chair, I'll just add a comment, I think they could put pickleball courts in that green space, that would encourage more people to come and stay, go in and out of the QuickTrip, since there's gonna be a kitchen there.
There, there you go, that's a perfect, perfect...
I, I support this even though I'm not getting my walkway across Third and Blue Parkway that I really want the city to lobby for.
Thank you, Commissioner Trachten, anyone else comment, question, Commissioner Benbrook? No? Commissioner Tzatziski?
Um, you know, I understand what Commissioner Benbrook's getting at, I had more concern with that entrance when the old building was there, uh, because I think some people would go there to try to make a left, and, and then kinda have that curb.
I bet you fifty bucks somebody still goes there and tries to make a left.
Yeah, I, I, I really do think so, and that was the one thing I was thinking, like, could you extend the median, the median a little further to the north, probably, I don't think it's gonna be as big of an issue now, being that the building's gonna be shifted to the north, but I understand what you're, where you're getting at on that, so, Commissioner, do you have anything you wanna say?
I, I just wanna say, I really do like the new configurations in the parking lot, lot, it, it feels a lot safer, and you don't worry so much about backing out and getting slammed into. Uh, also, Terry, you did an excellent job with your presentation, you had no real reason to be nervous, but...
That is, I, that was, you sold my thunder, but you did a great job, if this was your first time presenting, you did a great job, we beat you up a little bit, but not too much. Fair enough, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of application number PL 2024-135, preliminary development plan for QuickTrip convenience store with gas canopy 1001 and 1005 Southwest Blue Parkway, QuickTrip applicant.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, can I get a vote, please?
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Donnie Funk?
Yes.
Terry Trachten?
Yes.
Chip Tzatziski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Application has been recommended for approval, thank you guys for spending the evening with this, we appreciate it, come back anytime, we're always here on Thursdays. If you get really bored, you can watch us on TV, it is so exciting, you will add to probably be our sixth, maybe seventh, my mom has moved into a nursing home, so now she has all of the ladies watching us on Thursdays, so... Yeah. Roundtable, I know, Mr. Trachten, you had something for roundtable tonight, I do too, but I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Chair, of course, I think I gave you a little clue to where I was going tonight, Ms. Na- Nassif, um, around the UDO, um, standards, um, I do, I'm curious about, you know, our landscaping and how we landscape around our roadways and private property, and the burns and the distance, and adding more evergreen trees for screening between roadways, and just how we're looking at that as a master plan for the city. You know, I go to a lot of other communities and see lovely landscaping that hides buildings that you have no idea that are there, and it's very pleasant, and so I think I would just like for us to look at that at some point, um, I, um, because I, I think the thing that concerns me and tonight really wasn't an issue, because, I mean, I think those, um, you know, variations for the...
Tara, and I didn't catch her name, you guys don't have to sit through all this, you won't be rude if you wanna go home and see your son.
Yes, sorry, thank you guys, we love what you're doing. So... I think that's part of my, and then also how we're managing water runoff and a more, the other comment is around water runoff and how we're potentially managing that with a more na- natural, friendly way than we do now, so I don't know if we're considering any of those things, but I'm curious on your thoughts.
Um, good evening, yes, I am excited and delighted for your comments, because actually staff has been doing some review and is going to be very soon, um, going to CEDC and requesting that staff take a deeper look at trees, landscaping, open space requirements, active open space, and our mix of tree requirements.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, and then we're also have been having some discussions about native plantings or, you know, our BMPs and things like that, um, our review engineer manager, Sue Piles, has been doing tremendous work with updated inspection requirements and things on properties and working on communication, and so we're in the midst of that as well, and good timing.
I think those are all very timely things as we update how we manage throughout our community and make it a more pleasant experience for our residents, so thank you guys for, you're already a step ahead of me, I didn't even know, so thanks for the update.
At this time, we are also reviewing the city's stormwater requirements on our, kinda just internally, to try to bring more variety to water quality treatment in the city, more options, getting away a little bit more from detention basins that are not really needed, and more into water quality that, that is, we're working on that, and it have been for some time, a, a task force here in the city, and then APWA is rewriting their stormwater specifications, which we have our addendums to those specifications, and they are going to sort of massively change the direction that people think about stormwater and stormwater runoff management into more of a, uh, water quality, add some different things out there, think outside-the-box type, type thing, so I think, I think over the next couple of years, you're gonna see a big, a big shift in that, and I think it's going to add more water quality and more visual, um, pleasantness, I'll say, to, to projects, it'll be a, an amenity, and aesthetically pleasing more than just seeing wet or dry detention basins everywhere, so there's, there's a lot of thought going into that right now, it's just, it's one of those things you can't do on a dime, you can't turn on a dime, but we're certainly trying to come up with new alternatives.
Thank you for that update, Sue, see, I really just wanted to, to give you an opportunity to speak about the great work that you've been researching and how you're gonna make our community better, so thank you for that little spotlight. Thank you, Chair.
Probably a question for staff, I think we have or will be having some multifamily coming forward before too long, is there something in the works that may be a few weeks, months out? I think a lot of it was more, make it plain and simple, I've had a couple of comments from folks around the community, I think it was just the public publicity of the old auto auction, the Drake Development, and then the one further a little bit down south showing multifamily, can we get, um, some sort of yes, no, go fly a kite, that win one of those or the next multifamily that comes forward, that we could get someone from the school district here, because I think we'll have a few folks with the public that will want to hear the school district give their feedback, I know one gal from the public is polling the Longview, nu- is it New Longview Apartments, is that what it's called over there? Residents of New Longview, and also the Donovan Summit Square on the number of school-age children in those facilities, and they said that the city published something or someone spoke to that it was less than, like, seven percent of the occupants, I don't know where it came from, I was going off of, I actually emailed myself when she was telling me that, the Donovan and Summit Square rise of a seventy-seven percent single-family parent with school-age children, I don't know if that's true.
I'm unsure where that figure come, came from, so I would be interested in seeing the source on that, so I could review that, absolutely.
Just, just a little comment.
And, and just to make sure I'm following what you're talking about, is the question, what's the data on number of school-age children produced at the apartments, was that the question?
Their comment was having someone from the school district come and say, "By adding three hundred and eighty units..."
Right.
She had mentioned that in the last, I don't think it was a planning meeting, I think it was a council meeting on the last set of multifamily that went through, um, someone made a comment that it was under seven percent that there were schools.
So, there's one thing that I, I do remember pretty well, and I can tell you this, but the specific fact that you're referring to, I'm not familiar with, during the hearing for the North Point Apartments Phase Three, which is going in just across the street from Cooper's Hawk, the data that was provided to the city council here during that deliberation was one student per twenty units, and then I think the school district standard that they've told us, well, I don't wanna speak to that, because I don't know what it is today, so, but that's, I do remember that, but that's now a year ago at least, so, I knew, I know the school district has data, and that would be good data to have the update on, yeah.
Perfect data to have for us, and we can...
So, with your regards to inviting, uh, we more certainly will reach out to the, the school district and invite them to, uh, meeting to, to see if they want it. We do work closely with them throughout the year and advise them of all the projects that are coming through, as they have declined to make comment on that, but we definitely could reach out and, and ensure that they are aware and, and that you guys have made that request.
Perfect, you know how hard, how hard would it be to get that statistic from, I think it would be probably impossible to...
I don't think that's difficult, I think, I mean, I've been in discussions with school district staff, and they've talked with us about that, so I think we can investigate.
I think it, it wouldn't be impossible to get apartment complex to do a quick survey of their tenants, to say how many of them...
One of the, one of the things that, um, the company that I previously mentioned, and I, I think at least one of the company, but I don't wanna say, because I don't really recall, um, they have their own data of, you know, students based on the demographics that they're aware of, of their, of the residents in the units, you know, the renters in the units, and they, and they were testifying to that, but I don't, I don't know that data here.
We've already been in contact with the school district and, um, working with them to partner, to collect and, and see what data we can get and provide in relation to demographics and schools with multifamily and whatnot, and just general housing, so that is not a problem, we can definitely continue those discussions towards that as well.
Perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you. Anything else from the commission? Ask anything besides, do you want us to get the heck out of here? We are adjourned.